Waiting for one additional member and we'll get started. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Council President.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President.
I think we have eight. Let's see, one, two, six, seven. We do, we have eight folks. We'll begin. Good evening. Uh, thank you for joining us tonight. Tonight, we are hearing, uh, for I believe the third or fourth time, uh, bill number, council bill twenty-one dash zero one seven two. Uh, and then subsequent to, uh, these hearings, we're also include council, city council bill twenty-one dash zero one seven three. And city council, uh, bill twenty-one dash zero one seven four. Uh, this is the first phase of the House Baltimore package. Uh, it was originally introduced back in November. Um, and as I alluded to when we first joined, uh, I believe this is our, uh, third or fourth session, uh, to just go over the bill. I'm sorry, Nikki, did you have your ears?
I was letting you know it's the third session.
Oh, third session. Okay. Yes, the third session. Thank you for keeping me straight. Um, on the, um, in the meeting, we have, uh, councilwoman Felicia Porter, uh, we have councilman Antonio Glover, councilman John Bullock, councilwoman Odette Ramos, councilman Zeke Cohen, chairwoman Danielle McCray, I believe EC is Chair, uh, man Eric Costello. Um, Chair, uh, uh, City Councilman Ryan Dorsey. I believe rounds out the list for city council members. From my office, uh, the city council president's office, we have, uh, legislative, um, director Nikki Thompson. Uh, we also have Matt Stegman. Um, and then in their teams, we have Lucy Font as well as Nathan Po- Poole. Uh, from Legislative Services, we have our maestro and Mr. Larry Green, who holds us down. Uh, from the mayor's office, we have, um, Commissioner Alice Kennedy, um, Mara James from Finance, Shamaya Kearney from the Recovery Office, Nina Themelis, uh, from Mayor's Office of Government Relations, Stephanie Murdock from Department of Housing Community Development, Victor Travella from, uh, the Law Department, and Sophia Gepart, Sophia Gebra- Gebwat. I believe that rounds out everybody that we currently have on the bridge. Um, this is an opportunity for us all to come together. Um, as stated, this is the third, uh, working session. Uh, I believe at the last session, we talked about, um, bringing forth, um, amendments, uh, to move the bill in a direction that we all would like. Uh, the first, uh, time we met, we kind of went over the bill, uh, bills, uh, and discuss kind of the, the concept, the idea to ensure that we were all on the same page and moving in the right direction. Uh, the second hearing, we were able to hear directly from, uh, the mayor's office, uh, from particularly from the Department of Housing and Community Development on their concerns. And on this hearing is an opportunity for us to kind of look over some of the amendments that we've gotten. Uh, not only from the, the mayor's office, but also from community members, uh, advocacy groups, uh, and some even council members who have put forth, uh, certain amendments. Uh, so at this time, I believe, uh, Mr. Larry Green from the, um, Legislative, uh, Services has sent around to all council members, uh, the actual, um, some preliminary amendments. I think the strategy is we're gonna have Nikki Thompson kind of go through those amendments while we go through the bill, uh, and then we'll proceed from there with any questions or concerns. I also have seen, uh, Chairman Mark Conway has joined the bridge and I believe, um, I have, uh, acknowledged everybody on, I'm sorry, I did not acknowledge you, uh, Ms. Elena DePietro, uh, from the Law Department. Uh, she keeps everybody order and straight, uh, here in City Hall. So, thank you for joining Ms. Elena DePietro. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Nikki, uh, just kind of start walking us through, um, the, the amendments that we have. Um, then this is not the last opportunity for amendments, obviously. This is just an opportunity for us to walk through, uh, understand, um, the amendments, the impact to the bill, uh, and figure out again our next steps forward. So with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Nikki.
Thank you, Council President Mosby. And, uh, just for one moment to Director Green, if we could elevate Chair Schleifer, he said he is stuck on the attendee list. Okay, so, uh, to begin, I'm actually going to start with, um, one seventy-two, which is the Baltimore City Legacy Residents Urban Homesteading Program Legislation. It has the most amendments. And so, um, we're gonna start there. If that is fine with everyone. So to begin, um, the first amendment is to, well, the first set of amendments are to primarily address the Law Department's concerns. Um, I know we recently, our general counsel had a recent conversation with you, Victor, in the Law Department. So there's still some work to be done here. Uh, but to share the general rationale, we are adding a summary of the nineteen seventies Dollar Homes program to the recital section. And the purpose of that is to explain how the construction of highways and imminent domain disrupted black communities in nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties, and then connect back to this program, um, which is different from the original one of the nineteen seventies and describe how our program, while it's different, will operate in some of the same ways. Additionally, in the program participation eligibility clause, we're substituting legacy resident with some different language that gives DHCD the discretion to prioritize eligibility. Again, per the Law Department's concerns and also some previously raised concerns from DHCD. Uh, going further, it will allow for the department to prioritize applicants based on the greatest need, um, including but not limited to, um, obviously current residents, uh, those who have been evicted, those who are, have experienced foreclosure, uh, receive a housing subsidy or are on a waitlist for a housing subsidy. Their household income does not exceed a hundred and thirty percent AMI, uh, they are discharged bankruptcy debt, medical debt, and/or a graduate or debt holder from one of the certificate programs from ITT Tech. I'm specifically referencing those who have student loans and received, uh, settlement from one, from the closing of that institution. And then finally, um, the last major.
I'm sorry, before you, uh, continue, um, Director Green, if you could send around, um, those attachments to, um, the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, uh, as well as I guess the Law Department. That way they can ensure that they disseminate it to, uh, everyone who's participating on the bridge from the Mayor's Office and the administration. I'm sorry, Director Thompson, you can continue.
No, thank you for that. And my apologies for you're not having them earlier either. I know the Law Department should have them already. Uh, so to go to the last amendment that is in this perk section, the point, the purpose is to make the program obviously more accessible to city residents who have the greatest economic need and the history of systemic oppression that we are intending to target. Um, any questions about these first major amendments? I know in the chart that we sent around to council members, we included some links to, um, some research articles and resources that we use to further develop our rationale. Um, if there are any questions specifically about that, there are resources that we, we've sent around, but happy to share more in depth now as well if there are any questions before I move on to the next amendment.
Director Thompson, I have a, I have a question, if I may.
Yes, you can go ahead, um, mention.
Can you clearly define what is a designated impact investment neighborhood?
Yeah, there's a legal definition. So Nikki, could you talk about that?
Yes, so a designated impact investment neighborhood is actually a term that comes from of the, a NIF district. So basically, we have a map that came from the Department of Planning that was, has been researched and mapped out similar to the same lines of the Black Butterfly and the White L, um, but it is an existing map that are, that we've already used and has been re, is usually referenced in most of, um, the lawsuits that we're trying to address. So when we talk about redlining, when we talk about districts that have been redlined or those that have been, um, systemically dis- disinvested in, it's gonna fall in a NIF district just based off of the existing map. So we were trying to stay with language that already exists. So that way drafter, the drafters weren't having to dig and come up with a new definition for what a disinvested neighborhood is.
Okay, so I don't know if this is for the Director of Housing or Nick, or excuse me, Director Thompson, if you can answer this. The impact investment neighborhoods are very limited. So I'm looking at the map now and it looks like it's, uh, I guess a coral color or maybe leaning towards red. And then there's something that says eligible neighborhoods. Does this include the full neighborhoods that are colored, which are eligible neighborhoods, or just the ones that are in that coral red shade?
So the eligibility is just meaning that you have further prioritization. It doesn't, it doesn't, you're not completely excluded from eligibility just because you don't live in a NIF district. I just want to make that part clear. So the eligibility is just describing those that are in that coral outlined area have an additional prioritization, but anyone is, is eligible.
Are they only, and this is gonna be my last question, are they only eligible if they meet the other requirements within your amendment? So say if you have student loan debt, say if you have a discharged bankruptcy, is that the only other thing that will allow you to be eligible? Say if you live into one-two-oh-six, some of these Northeast communities, is that the only criteria that would allow you?
No, so in the amendments, it outlines that DHCD has the discretion to weigh these, uh, these eligibility requirements, um, to which they see fit. These are just further prioritizations. So yes, it is under the term eligibility because that is where we're defining it in the code, but you are not excluded from eligibility if you are not specifically one and/or all of these requirements.
So essentially, just to make sure, so essentially you could apply to this program, any, you could live in any area within the city and apply to this program.
Yes, and you would have further prioritization if you're within the, but yes, you can.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much for answering my questions.
No problem.
One thing I want to add, uh, real quick is, uh, when we're going over some of the amendment two, some of the new, um, language, uh, no- number three in the list, I'm sorry, not number three, uh, number, number six in the list has an income at or below a hundred thirty percent of the city's, uh, median, uh, income, so AMI. Uh, the purpose for that, one-thirty might jump out and seem high of folks, but remember based off of the, the eligibility and based off of the programming priorities, the lowest AMI, um, are prioritized higher than higher AMIs. Uh, so I think that that's a real important, um, distinction just to make, uh, when we're talking about this particular amendment. This doesn't change, uh, the priority associated with, um, the folks in the lowest AMI bracket having the highest priority for the program. I believe I heard, uh, someone about to ask a question.
Yes, Mr. President.
Jeremy Stokes, the floor is yours.
I have a question. Um, on the legacy piece or maybe the Dollar House program? Because there was, uh, some constituents asked me if they live, let's say they lived in the county first, but they moved to the city. And is there, uh, a time where they have to live in the city a certain amount of time? One, maybe qualify for the legacy resident or particularly maybe the Dollar House program? Cause that was asked, if they was there a timeline in terms of them.
Yes, uh, yeah, someone's, uh, consecutive time in the city is a, is a, um, requirement. Um, you know, we can use the term Dollar House Legacy Program interchangeable, it's the same bill. Uh, but yes, the, the, the intention is for this to, um, be leveraged from legacy residents, folks who have actually lived in Baltimore, particularly these communities that have gone through the crime, the blight, the grime, um, because of the disproportionate amount of disinvestment.
Mr. President, is there a, a, a number on how long they have to be moved?
There's a, there's a couple of different qualifications that are in the bill. Uh, one, uh, is fifteen years. Is that right, Director Thompson?
Yes, but it, we have some, I, I feel like the question is more about the definition of continuous and like what can, what is considered continuous? So if you have a period of time, well, where you've lived in the city, but you moved and then you came back, you would be able to, if you have like public records to show that you have had the amount of time, um, in the city that meets the requirement, which is Council President Mosby said, it's fifteen years. Uh, we are giving DHC the ability to have the discretion to work with you if that is something that they would like to do based off of the criteria that's listed, um, in or, in order for us to follow through with some of the recommendations that we've gotten from the Law Department, that discretion we're solely giving to D- DHCD and then providing the, providing them these additional guidelines as to who we would like this program to be targeted to.
Thank you so much.
Uh, I had a question, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Uh, so, uh, similar, the same section, uh, that Director Thompson is referring to, um, it, uh, it notes the, 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 you know, if an individual is receiving a housing subsidy or uh, is on a waitlist for housing subsidy, uh, I guess, could you elaborate? I- is that referring to, um, the Section Eight program or is it, would it be any types of subsidy? I guess, could you, uh, define that a little bit further? And if it is the Section Eight, would, I, how would we verify that? Um, that they were in that, in that program or on the waitlist? Is that something that HABC would be able to send over?
So first, it would be any program, any, um, housing subsidy program. We do have some further language in the amendment that kind of details how we want to, um, be more particular about like HUD approved counseling, uh, services and those, those types of things. So we are in the places where we can align in terms of language, um, to further, you know, answer your question or be more specific, more specific to your, to your question of which types of programs. We have those language fixes further on in these amendments. Uh, but also it should be, you know, ultimately, as the legislative body, we have to defer to the data sharing practices of what already exists within the agencies. Um, in, uh, H nine, in CB one seventy-two, we have an amendment based specifically off of the Law Department's raising of that question of how are, how is the data going to be shared? And I think from the last conversation we had, DHCD mentioned that they were already in the process of, of working that out and figuring out how to better share within, um, their existing programs. And so we're again leaving that discretion, um, totally up to their implementation in order to align with what is already in practice. But I will say HABC has not reached out with any, um, opposition on that point, but I'm happy to follow up, um, to get clarity there for you, Councilmember.
And, and Councilmember, also, um, the, the key to this that really, um, alerted us to want to factor this into this bill is currently, um, as relates to housing choice vouchers, they can be applied to a mortgage. They don't necessarily have to be applied to a rent. Uh, now, in speaking with, uh, the Deputy Secretary and the information that they provided back to us of HUD, um, you know, it's anemic at, at best as it relates to the amount of, uh, examples around the country where uh, folks have, have done so. So we wanted to intentionally write it into this particular bill in hopes that, you know, folks would be able to amortize out, you know, I think up to twenty years they can do it via a mortgage as opposed to just paying rent, uh, in our communities. But we, at that same point, it's specific to housing choice vouchers where we kind of got the idea from. Um, we didn't want to exclude if there were other any, any other opportunities associated with rent subsidies that could also be applied to going towards, um, a mortgage payment as opposed to rent.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. I, I was asking because it, recently we've had a, is, I don't want to go into weeds and something in my district, but the issue of disclosing came up, uh, in, in a particular neighborhood. So that's, that's where that question came from, uh, cause I'm kind of dealing with that right now as well. So, thank you. That was the only question I had so far.
Director Thompson, I had a question, a question real quick on amendment number three. Um, can you explain the background? And I may just not know, um, I, I just may not know re- related to the city owns the property and has the authority to sell the property. Is that like a Q and A of the program just to ensure that, um, the program is maintaining its integrity for city residents?
Exactly right. You answered your own question. Yes.
Okay, alright, just one minute. So, um, so a further, um, uh, further question to that, what additional, um, aspects of that process is the city gonna entail? Um, given that we already own most of the, we already own majority of the properties that we are planning on selling, um, or incorporating into this particular program? Um, how, how's the city gonna balance that with the current state of houses that the currently, I mean, the city currently kind of manages and operates as it relates to like vacant homes and, and receivership and things of that nature. And I may just not be connecting the dots.
No, you are, you, you are, um, Councilwoman. I, I think just at a thirty thousand foot level, kind of the motivation behind this bill and the particular section you're pointing out is residential property that's currently in authority and control of the city of Baltimore.
Yes.
We want to give basically first right of refu- refusal to residents of Baltimore by creating a pipeline for home, home, um, ownership. Um, again, you know, you look in our communities, east, west, northwest, southwest, all throughout the city, um, where we have a very large block of residents who are renting. Um, there's a statistic out there that says, um, uh, fifty, more, close to fifty percent of our population, uh, pay, uh, over thirty-five percent or over in rent every single month out of their monthly income. Uh, we know many of these neighborhoods where they're paying twelve hundred, thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars a month in rent, uh, could easily be a seven or eight or nine hundred dollar, uh, amount in a mortgage. Uh, so what we would like to do is say to the city of Baltimore, all of the property that's under our control, that we will put into the registry that we kind of communicate throughout the bill, that the first right of refusal should be folks that are eligible for this particular program. Um, I think the one key thing that we're doing here is, you know, it gives us time to kind of evaluate and look at this. So this is not end all be all. Uh, we did put a sunset in the bill to provide the city two years to kind of run this program to see what's working, what's not working. But the idea is that we would literally park all of the property, uh, into a reserve, into a registry, uh, that residents of Baltimore would be able to, uh, go in and get. Um, again, most of, mo- most of the residents that we're referring to, um, don't necessarily know the ins and outs of the real estate process and dealing and, and, and procuring, uh, city, city property. Uh, but this would be a particular program that we could target, we can market, uh, to the intended class of, of individuals in our city, uh, to again provide a pipeline of homeownership for that.
Mr. President, are, are we allowed to, um, ask agent, um, like particular agencies' questions or is that?
I'm okay with that. I mean, I, I, this is a working session, so I'm, I'm.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure I wasn't, I'm new. I wasn't sure.
I mean, I will say typically we don't, but you know.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
No, 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 I, I, I want to be very clear. The point of this is for us all to come together and we can kind of continue to work through that. We know that this is a very large, complicated, but extremely substantive and consequential bill. Uh, so I think just us sitting and, and kind of working through this is, is important. So if you have a question for the Law Department or uh, Department of Housing, I say let's, let's go at it. Let's just.
Okay, thank, thank you so much, Mr. President. Um, Director Kennedy, are you all able to maintain that with the current operations that you all have now?
Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Porter, for clarification, are we able to maintain the list of properties?
Yeah, this added list of properties. So for instance, if the, these houses in this particular program go back to DCH, well, yeah, Department of Housing, are you all able to maintain that, oh, you're all able to maintain, um, the houses that you currently own and under your purview along with these additional houses?
Councilwoman, ninety-five percent of the houses that we're talking to are under the control of DHC currently today. So these are all houses that are already available. We're just saying, we don't want them to go to maybe scattered site developers. Uh, we don't want them to go to, say, nonprofits. We would like for them to be homeowners for residents, uh, legacy residents in the city of Baltimore, but they are all already under the control of DHD.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I won't say all, ninety-eight percent, I don't know. Commissioner Kennedy, you probably know better.
Yeah, so we currently have, um, in the DCD, we currently have around twelve hundred and fifty-ish properties that are city-owned. And of those twelve hundred and fifty-one, um, there are currently available on the regi, on a registry, available on a registry, which is around two hundred. Um, but we've determined through different pieces of the legislation as proposed, there'd be some subset of around three hundred, probably around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and ninety-five, um, that could be eligible.
Okay.
And, and unfortunately. We already maintain that.
You are, okay, so you are.
Yeah, unfortunately, Commissioner Kennedy, I know you keep going over those numbers. We did it a lot in the past session. We haven't had a chance to kind of go over the numbers with you. We look forward to kind of having that meeting. Um, but we would also factor in, um, vacant lots. So basically everything that's zoned as residential, um, would fit into this program. Um, I believe the numbers that Commissioner Kennedy are referring to, um, was, was kind of what they deducted from the legislation of what they thought could be available from the existing list that they had, which was not inclusive of vacant, uh, property of, of, uh, of lots and, uh, without structures currently sitting on it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The, the, these rules also apply to the, uh, homes that are under the Controller's office? Cause I know we do have some that's under the Controller's office as well.
No, that's actually a great question. They are, so that's why I didn't say one hundred percent. There are a, a small amount of, of potential properties that could be in the comptroller. Uh, a lot of times the comptroller list does not really have a lot of residential properties, but there could be some that would, if this was to pass, um, that would go inside of that all-inclusive registry, uh, for residents to, um, buy for a dollar. Thank you. I see the hand raised of, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, a couple of questions just on the section that we're in, um, uh, the department, uh, currently already has a, a list of, um, city-owned properties. So we're asking that we we're asking them to create another one, or could they just have a designated, like a, on their list can say this is eligible for this program?
So that's a good question. Um, the problem, uh, with the list is we want to have a consolidated list. Uh, so for a person that is not as, um, versed in municipal real estate here in the city, uh, Baltimore, and the processes and accessibility and the network, and maybe even the know-how to try to figure out and navigate, we want to have a, basically a one-stop shop. Uh, so kind of in coordination with the question that Councilman Glover just asked, um, some properties that would fall under the comptroller, we will want all of those properties in one list. Uh, so when we are talking about, um, the registry in this, we're talking about a one-stop shop for residents to be able to go to. Uh, just like you would go to to try to figure out what available properties are in the city of Baltimore and you can go to some real estate site and, you know, thumb through that site to try to figure out all the properties. We wouldn't want folks that have to go through multiple lists. We will want just one consolidated site of all assets that the city has the authority to sell that are deemed residential.
Uh, so my, thank you for that. Um, the, the second question is right now vacant lots or not? I mean, I guess it depends on where they are zoned. Um, not all of them are deemed, uh, residential. So we would have to put language in here to try to account for those.
So, yeah, any, any. Well, well, I think it's, it's his property, um, that's zoned residential, uh, which would fall under vacant lots. But yes, definitely open to try to drill down and clarify that a little more. I know that the original analysis that, and we communicated, we had a, a, a meeting. I know that the original analysis that, and we communicated, we had a meeting with housing. But I know that some of the original analysis that also Commissioner Kennedy has pointed out today did not factor in those vacant lots. But the idea would be for vacant residential property, vacant residential property lots as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Councilwoman President Mosley, this is Commissioner Kennedy. Can I ask a clarifying question about the lots and the properties? So you are correct, we did not calculate in vacant lots into the analysis, given that the, the bill is geared more in our interpretation when reading the bill language to vacant buildings and vacant property, like vacant properties alone as, as it stands. So we could potentially see an increase in some availability on a vacant lot. We'd have to do the analysis to see how many are, would be available potentially for infill because of the fact that a lot of our vacant lots are located in areas where the city does not own all of the vacant properties. So it would make it very difficult to build new construction of one single townhome or one single family detached on one lot when there's other properties next to it that are not owned. Also, in terms of accessibility and pricing, that changes also, you know, one of the key components that we talked about about the legislation before is access to capital. So new construction financing is completely different from rehabilitation financing. And the cost of a vacant lot to build brand-new construction increases the cost alone by thirty thousand to sixty thousand dollars, which will then increase the cost to do a one-off new construction property on a vacant lot. So I just want to highlight that as something that we want to talk about and probably be more clear in the legislation. And then in terms of the registry, I mean, every, all of the city-owned properties are currently in one location. And then, you know, we're launching our new website with all of the properties. So in two, less than two weeks, two to three weeks, that website will be available where all of the residential properties, including lots, are in one, one, one location. So I would ask for a little bit of clarification on that in terms of trying to figure out the eligibility requirements. Would we put those eligibility requirements on when someone applied for the vacant property? Because we'll have everything in one location for them to look for. And then can I make a suggestion in terms of another potential amendment? Which would be to remove a number of these qualifications that seem to confuse and potentially add additional layers of review that needs to happen? And just focus on if you are looking to purchase a city-owned property and you want to purchase that as your primary residence and live there for a minimum of ten years, that you qualify to purchase the property for a dollar. Like if you're looking to purchase it as your primary residence, to renovate that vacant property as your primary residence and live there, that anybody can do that, that wants to have it as their primary residence and we sell it for the dollar. Like, as I noted in our last hearing, that's the easiest part of this, is that we can sell the property for a dollar. So I don't understand what the additional, and maybe it's trying to make sure that we prioritize the other residents that may be interested so that we are ensuring that we're, you know, helping the population that was negatively impacted by redlining. But could we think about it more broadly that if you are someone that wants to live in Baltimore City and renovate a vacant property as your primary residence, vacant house property as your primary residence, that you can purchase that for a dollar as long as you can access the necessary mortgage financing that's required to renovate that property?
Yeah, so definitely open to any suggestions for amendments. I think you kind of answered, I guess, kind of the foundation of where you were going. We wanted to develop a program that really provided an opportunity for the large percentage of Baltimoreans who've never had this opportunity, not just through the federal government with realigning, with the state, with disinvestment, but also with Baltimore City and the Department of Housing and Community Development. So I think that it does create some levels of complexity. And I think that maybe there are opportunities for us to streamline kind of those, that list. But we did want to create that level of priority. One of the biggest things that I kind of talked about earlier was even the prioritization associated with AMIs, right? So the lowest folks that fall, that, that fall in the lowest class of AMI would get the highest priority than someone is in a higher class of AMI. The biggest, the biggest thing is, one, providing them that pipeline of opportunity, but also understanding, knowing that there's only going to be, there's only going to be a limited pool of potential residential properties that they can afford to buy. So what I would not want is on its other higher AMI bracket to go in and maybe get a safer investment or whatever of a property that someone that fit inside of fifty or sixty percent AMI could basically afford. So definitely open to kind of continue to massage that list. You know, the eligibility is, is one of the key things that if, that we want to make sure we do this, right? I think that when we talk about like the difference between this Dollar House program and what was done, you know, forty some years ago is developing that prioritization for folks that have been forgotten for far too long. So again, how does that look? We're definitely open and leveraging you as a subject matter expert to kind of help and support us come up with that list and how that list looks and the prioritization associated with the list. But there is a key component of this and the motivation behind this is really providing an opportunity for folks who have not had this opportunity through the city in the past.
That makes sense. And I'd say we should put on the table for more discussion because, you know, when thinking about it, it would seem that there's the property, like our list of properties which is available and that applications would be on a rolling basis. So it would be difficult to prioritize someone over someone else because if they're on a rolling basis and they're interested in one specific property, then we would process that application for that property. We wouldn't necessarily hold that property to say, no, you, do you see what I'm saying? Like, it would only come into play if we got two competing applications on the same property at once. Would then a prioritization schedule fall into it?
Yeah, so I, I mean, maybe I'm a little naive, but I kind of have an expectation that if we're successful in passing this, that there's going to be a tremendous amount of interest throughout our community, through all different socioeconomic classes, right? So I think the idea of prioritization is there's several steps that you have to take before you're formally granted the property. Be it, you know, completed the HUD improved first-time home buyers class, be it coming back with your, 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 your preapproval from whatever lender that you, that you've worked with. So there's a lot of different steps that you're going to have to kind of come back as an application to the city after we've already determined your eligibility and you can meet, you meet the eligibility requirements of the program and you're in the program. There's a lot of steps that you have to take to, to actually go to closing for, for, or the easiest way to say that. So during that process, maybe Chris comes in one day, Nick comes in another day, and Eric Costello comes in the third day. At the end of the day, our applications, yes, and our eligibility did get approved, but maybe Eric is a lot faster than Nick and Chris didn't, you know. During that process, there's going to be a period in which there could be competing interests of who has access to the remaining properties. And the idea of that prioritization is to provide the folks based off of socioeconomics and inverting kind of the AMI kind of list, but providing the lowest on the AMI, the highest priority and the other things. But again, you know, we don't want to make this as overly complicated. We want to make it streamlined and pretty straightforward. Again, the motivation is for folks, particularly the folks that have been living in these communities, that have been disproportionately disinvested in, that have been dealing with the crime, dealing with the grime, that want to stay Baltimore City residents, that are paying a lot in rent. We want to develop pipelines for them to have homeownership. So however, we kind of, as a council and working with you, Commissioner Kennedy, come up with that. I'm totally okay with that. But I don't want it to be as clear-cut as someone who just wants to make a owner-occupied house here in the city of Baltimore and agrees to live there for ten years. That's what we did forty years ago. And we saw how that happened and we saw, you know, further economic apartheid and segregation in our city. But this is be a program for folks to, to take advantage of as it relates to a way that we haven't necessarily done business in the city of Baltimore.
Can I ask a question, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember, floor is yours.
So I'm thinking about this. So do, just, just like shut me off if I'm wrong, but would, would the council have like any power over allowing certain community groups or associations within those areas to purchase those homes? I know you said that we're not dealing with developers, we're not dealing with like nonprofits. And the reason why I'm asking is only because of the fact that it's hard when we have community associations that are renting or that are able to get free space at a church or at another center to sometimes have that church or that center kind of like sell that property to someone else and no longer does that community association exist. And I, I think about the one, like the care community in my district where there's properties less available. And it seems like at times that they're not able to kind of sort of like purchase, purchase that property because housing still has access to kind of sell that property to whom they think the city would benefit more off. But I think that it's important that we keep these community associations around so that when we do start to bring more folks into our communities, then I think that by them joining the community association and getting the education of the communities and the information within the community, I think that's what, you know, a help stabilize and bring our communities together. So would there be any kind of room for us as council members to kind of propose some kind of legislation to say, you know what, we're, you know, a hundred percent or the community's a hundred percent on this property to make sure that this community association is stable and is around without being kicked out, you know, of the community, whether you're to purchase the property, if we vouched for them?
So, so this bill is intended for the real estate transaction between the city of Baltimore and individual individuals who want to be owner occupants in these communities in the city of Baltimore. This is not to developers, this is not to nonprofits, this is not to CDCs, this is not to organizations. But this is directly to individuals, cutting the middleman out and ensuring that we're providing a pathway for homeownership for particularly legacy renters of our city. Now, the question I think that you're also asking is, we're talking only residential properties. We're not talking about church spaces, like the example you brought up, or other commercial-related spaces. We're talking about residential property that the city of Baltimore currently has the authority to sell.
Yeah, some of these are residential properties. Some of these are, like the Gallery Park was, which was a residential property, just so happened the developer, when, like when they moved on, they decided to donate the property to the community. And, you know, they can't sell the property to a developer. It's, it's there for the community. It's always going to be there for the community. And I'm just thinking about some of those community organizations that are big, that are thriving, that are really going to work in the community, but they had to rely on places like a church to say, you know what, we will allow you to come and we'll volunteer this space for you to use for your organization as opposed to them selling maybe the property to whomever. And then later on, that community association basically doesn't have anywhere else to go because the new owners won't allow them to come in to continue to do the work of the community.
Yeah, understood. I mean, I definitely understand the problem, but in a private market, you know, a seller has the ability to sell to the buyer that they so choose, right? So I think as council members, you know, we should try to work with our community associations to one, understand the MOUs and the agreements and the contracts that they have with folks that they're renting space from or utilizing space from. But this program, this particular bill does not change that, the plight of, of situations there. And this is just a program that says for properties that are currently for sale, that the city can sell, we just, we want you not to sell to out-of-town developers. We don't want you to sell to some scattered site developer. But we want you to sell these properties to residents of Baltimore City, legacy, particularly legacy renters as a way to, one, keep them in our communities because we know from the past census data, the folks in these communities are leaving the fastest. But also, we know that they're paying more for rent, that they could be paying for an actual mortgage. So this is just creating a pathway for, and a pipeline for homeownership for folks that have been living in our communities through some of the disproportionate amount of disinvestment over the past couple of decades. Councilwoman Ramos, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just came up with another question on this section. I know we have a lot more sections to go, so. It's, I'll try to make it brief, but one, we're just talking about prioritization. And I understand where we're trying to go. One of the concerns that was brought to me was the fact that in some cases, there are circumstances in somebody's, you know, economic and credit history where, well, let's not even go there. Let's say that there's a loan that they are able to get, but the construction cost is really high. It's going to be, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But in the market that it's in, and if that house is still next to vacant properties, it's probably only going to be worth about a hundred and fifty. So that person ends up being underwater. And is that a decision that we want D H C D to make? Is to say, well, wait a second, this person may end up being underwater, so we're going to go this way? Or how, how do we try to avoid that situation?
So no, I don't think that that should be a decision for D H C D. I think that the litmus test for that will be the bank. So the bank is not going to put up the capital to rebuild a property that on day one is going to be underwater unless there's a special program and the bank is betting on the future of that particular. I've, I've known of programs that have been out there for a hundred twenty percent of construction costs, residential properties. They, they come far, a few in between. But for a overwhelming large percentage of the programs that are out there, a bank is not going to put up the construction cost of a property that on day one becomes underwater. You know, I think that, and we have researched, and I can, I can send you, I sent to some other council members, information. It says a good estimate and a very conservative estimate, even in today's market, is about a hundred dollars per square foot for building grade as relates to renovation of an existing dwelling, right? So two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, was the example you listed as a two hundred, twenty-five hundred square foot house. And a lot of the houses that we're talking about are not that large. Some are fourteen hundred square feet, fifteen hundred square feet. And if you know, the, the companion bill, the, the bill that we're going to hear subsequent to this bill, you know, provides a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to take down and defray the cost. So for instance, if we have a hundred, we have a fourteen hundred square foot house, which is a typical house in East Baltimore, West Baltimore, in certain neighborhoods, that would be like a construction cost of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Minus the twenty-five thousand dollar grant puts you at a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. You amortize that over thirty years, you're talking about a pretty cheap mortgage payment and that's significantly less than what people, that folks pay with that same exact house and the same exact communities under the same exact conditions today in rent. So that's the point of the program.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? And, and Councilwoman Ramos, I'll point you to the National Home Builders stats on it. That's also another reason why we want to cut out the middleman. Because, you know, the middleman, a sizable, like quality, conservative profit for, say, like a developer, the middle person is about fifteen percent. You get between twelve to fifteen percent, you know, you're kind of moving in the right direction. A lot of people get a lot more, but, you know, that's kind of an okay amount to get, right? So we want to cut that out. We want to, we don't want to take that out of the equity in a person's home. But I think the biggest protection here is the bank not really even caring about the consumer is going to protect its own interest as relates to the money that they're lending out. Again, they're not going to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out on the street and the house is worth, in your example, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's just not going to happen. Another thing that we've talked about is this idea of selling property where there's a vacant house next door, whether privately. house next door, whether privately owned or not. Um the city did a program. Um I'm a little, I'm intimately uh uh connected to it because it's the way I purchased my house in two thousand and four, a long time ago. Um where I was living next to a vacant house that was privately owned um called City Selling City Own Properties Efficiently, the Scope Program. So there's ways and for folks to obtain these construction loans. Um there's been programs that the city has ru- has run uh in these types of conditions, and this is just another iteration of kind of going through that path. But again, we're going to continue to work with housing. I think we have a a meeting, housing unfortunately had to cancel the first meeting. But we have a housing to kind of a meeting with housing to go over those numbers to ensure that we're putting out um the exact number of the type of properties we're going to be able to put on the street uh for this program that again, it should exist for about two years.
Thank you. I appreciate that detail. And yeah, if you could send me the link to the um research that you're looking at, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
No problem. Are there any other questions or concerns? Earring, I'm sorry, uh Councilman Burnett?
Yeah, so on or just on the line of questioning that Councilmember Ramos just asked. Um if there were situations where uh folks have run out of the ability to rehab, uh what would what would happen from that point? Um just a pretty simple.
So the typical residential program that they're going to be able to get from a bank. Um I think one easy program to look up for everybody to look up is the the FHA uh two oh three K program. Uh so basically what happens is Chris Burnett identifies a property. In identifying the property, Chris gets access to the property and determines all that you have to do to fix that property up. Does it need a new roof? Does it need new framing? How is the electrical panel? What's the plumbing like? Gutters, windows, whatever, right? You itemize out uh how much that's going to cost. It's not Chris doing it alone by itself. It's not Chris doing it by itself at all. It's Chris utilizing a licensed contractor to say, hey, Chris, and to bank whatever, I can do X amount of work for Y amount in Z amount of time, right? So you're going to take that and you're going to go to the bank. The bank signs off and approves that. You know, these costs are in line with this level of work that's needed to take place and so on. Then you go out, Chris, and you're going to get an independent inspector. That's going to go out and they're going to inspect that property as well to determine everything that the construction person said that if they do would meet the codes and the standards of the city of Baltimore, state of Maryland. And ensure that at the end of this rainbow, that property is going to be able to get a certificate of use and occupancy. It's in it's inhabited, right? The bank accepts that and agrees to that. You go to closing. Now, inside of that closing, the bank is also, like I said, going to protect itself. Typically, say if you're approved for, say, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in construction costs, the bank off the top is going to automatically say, Chris, you can only use a hundred and twenty thousand of this money for your actual construction costs. So as it relates to the quote that you got from your develop, from the from the um the quote that you got from your um your your license and bonded contractor to what the inspector signed off on, that's going to only total up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, you've been approved for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But what the bank typically does is develops a a reserve or contingency fund where they normally take between fifteen and twenty percent and they park that away for any things that the contractor wasn't able to see or even the inspector wasn't able to put on. So after you go through closing, there's something called a draw schedule. Where your contractor is going to say, hey, first, I'm going to do the roof and I'm going to do the windows and they cost X amount for material as well as for labor. They go out, they do the work, and then they in turn go back to your bank and the bank gives them that draw amount. Say it was for twenty-five thousand dollars. And they go on to the next draw, all the way down to the end of the job. And when you get to the end of the job, there might be money left over for contingency or your contractor maybe found things that were behind the walls that they didn't really factor in. But there is a very guarded and conservative process through this repair, this construction repair loan process uh that is used time and time again. Uh uh so I think that um the one thing I I kept leaning onto is, you know, the I this idea that Chris needs to know how to pick up a hammer and drive a nail into a piece of wood. It's not necessarily the case. Um the idea that Chris is going to have to go find a licensed and bonded contractor that he trusts and believes in and 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 is in in support of of um and the the idea that Chris is going to have to go and find out and 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 identify and uh independent uh inspector that the bank's going to sign off on. Um between that relationship is how you ensure that there's some level of protection throughout that entire process. This is not a bank and and I know that this was a a really confusing for a lot of folks. This is not a bank saying, Chris, you're approved for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Here's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Go out and rebuild this house and, you know, you kind of spending the money the way you want to spend it. It's very controlled schedule uh of spending down to ensure that at the end of that rainbow, you have a house that's going to get a certificate of use and occupancy. Uh and so that's point, it's not going to be underwater uh and it's going to be bonded and insured and protected. Uh so that that's the way that process works. So I would I would I would I I maybe I'll pull together something, but I would ask folks to go look at the FHA two oh three K program as like a model of what someone could do in this program.
Okay, um yeah, any info you want to send, I'll take it on that.
Yeah, so I I what I'll do is um I just want individually send it out. We'll send it out to to all the members. I think it was again, the National Home Builders uh where, you know, we're able to pull down the the white paper and stuff associated with uh the the amount of cost to to fix up a residential property. Uh and then I'll go and find and grab something about two oh three K program that kind of walks everybody through it. And again, I think I think the key thing I'm saying here is not that a person has to do FHA two oh three K, but that's an example of a construction program that could be utilized in this in this program. And it's also kind of a standard of which a lot of residential construction pro- uh programs run under.
Additionally, Councilmember Burnett, I did want to add that the original language does allow for an appeals process. So if there is for any reason that any resident is in this program or enrolled in the program needs additional time um needs to do additional follow up, is waiting on a certificate of occupancy. I mean, there are so many things that could prov- provide some type of obstacle through this process. So there is in the language, the ability to appeal to um DHCD for various reasons. Just in the timeline.
Okay, um the second question I had, um and I think you touched on this uh earlier, Director Thompson, was verification of residency. Um can you, I guess, speak to that a little bit more um on how someone may verify that? Um and particularly concerned with folks that may um have, you know, sort of a spotty rental history or may have couch surfed at some point, um you know, or lived with a family member. Uh I guess are there, well, one, I guess, what would the verification look like? And two, how could we account for folks that um may have, you know, experienced some hardship at some point in that fifteen year period?
Yes, so the way that we are trying to codify this particular process is just for the allowing of any public records, so voter registration, um driver's license, any any type of public record that just shows your address. Um and also further to that point, um we met with the Urban Institute and they provided us with some clarifying language in Amendment Four, specifically for those who are trying to determine if continuous includes periods of incarceration, parole, probation um to, as you mentioned earlier, those who have had um difficulty with consistently having, you know, their name on a lease. Um originally, in the first bill, that was a requirement and we have struck in that language in these amendments as well uh to, there was a requirement to show that you had your name on a rental lease and just from our various meetings with housing advocates and community, it was very clear that that was going to be a hurdle. Um so we are just simply allowing for any public record and then really putting um our faith in DHCD again, as already been mentioned, to pull together on that timeline as much as possible with what public information is available because we acknowledge that this is going to be a very hard population to prove um con- continuous time periods, but we also know these are communities where they've been here, they have um paid taxes, you know, there are so many different public records that point to your residency, not necessarily having to have that lease in hand to show that you've been here for a certain period of time as we did in the previous bill, but these amendments fix that.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's that's all I got uh for for this section.
I think that's a hand of um Councilman Cohen, yeah, Councilman Cohen.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Somewhat building off of Councilmember Ramos's question as well. Um, have we done an analysis of how many of these homes? Um given the twenty-five thousand um in the other bill, like how many of these homes would be versus would not be underwater, you know, relating back to your point about the two oh three K loan? Just sort of a, ha- have we looked at like how many of these will be eligible for that type of loan or, you know, if they got this grant? Um, you know, it it would, the bank would be able to lend to them versus how many they'd still be in trouble on?
Yeah, so the the amount of time to analyze the twelve hundred or so properties that DHCD currently has uh and determine, one, the construction costs of each. So you literally have to open the door, go in, try to see from a framing perspective, from a structural perspective, all that's needed to kind of be done to determine where you're at. So so the answer is definitely not. Um because it's it's just a, it's an impossible task. I mean, it would take the city at the rate that we can go at probably maybe ten years to just do that evaluation and come back to come up with a program. I think the key to your question is um and to uh Councilwoman Ro- Ramos's question is, like, just from a consumer protection perspective. Um again, a bank is not going to lend um money to a property that doesn't appraise for the money that in which they're lending for. Um you know, you go to refinance or anything. You know, today for your own property, you're not even going to get a hundred percent of what your property is worth. You know, typically banks will lend up to eighty percent. Uh so the idea that there's going to be some wholesale uh type of concern of folks being underwater uh when they get money from a lender, um I just don't think that that'll that meets any level of concern of us for this program. I think the bigger thing is what we would like to do is like, put the properties that the city is currently controlling, has the authority to sell, freeze them for legacy residents of the city of Baltimore, for folks that are renting, that are paying way too much in rent. Uh and the properties that are going to work for those individuals, let it work through this program uh for two years. Uh we might get to the end of the two years and determine that, you know, there's a subset of these properties that there's no way a person could go in and kind of fix up and um or there's other unintended issues associated with trying to sell those particular properties. And, you know, at that point, we'll we'll meet it. But this idea that, again, folks are going to be underwater as a result of this program. From all the financial institutions that we've spoken with and all the banks that are excited about this program that we've spoken to with, they don't see an issue with that a- at all. And again, they're going to always protect the money that they're lending out. They're not in the business of lending out money for real estate that's underwater.
Sure, gotcha. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Is it possible for me to go through the rest of the amendments for this?
Yeah, so so we'll we'll hold questions, but I know Commissioner Kennedy um had either comment or concern or question, you know, just want to ensure that we have good dialogue with the administration. So Commissioner Kennedy, I I think if you wanted to interject or or have another questions, the floor is yours.
Yeah, as a follow up with um Councilwoman Ramos and Councilman um Cohen's question, is it possible to get um some of the names of the banks and lending institutions that you've spoken with because we want to um, you know, be having those conversations as well because we've been having conversations, I've been having conversations for a number of years as as Commissioner.
Um and Madam Commissioner, perfect.
Great.
I will.
Because and I think also in one of our original um bill reports, we put it in some analysis related to the housing markets um for the properties that we do own. So I just want to re- remind everyone that the city essentially has in our twelve hundred properties as homeownership, the like worst of the worst of vacant properties in the city of Baltimore in terms of condition and the cost to improve. So we see a higher per square footage cost for renovation um for both our nonprofit and for profit developers. And then also, we know that a number of the properties are located in areas where um the market does not support the as-built appraised value, which would not be, you know, lent upon. So I I do think that more and we can share that additional analysis because it continues to just limit the number of properties that would be available.
Understood. Again, we we we're happy to have the meeting. I know that unfortunately you had to cancel the first meeting, but we stand ready and committed to kind of sit down and go over that with you and your team. Uh when you say that the hundred dollars um is 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 south of the number that you're seeing, what 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 dollar amount per square foot are you seeing?
We're seeing anywhere from between um a hundred fifty to two hundred square feet. So and and the price of lumber right now is, and part of that is because of the price of lumber is what we're seeing now. We have um some of the main, you know, the four, what is it, the four by sixteen by? Now I'm thinking about the one board that I can't remember the exact name of, but the price, we've seen that those are upwards of seventy-five dollars apiece at the moment. So the price of lumber as it stands now is just generally increase the overall cost per square footage uh for a number of these homes um that we're seeing.
We realize the supply chain has taken a negative hit, particularly as relates to construction material. Um hopefully that normalizes off and comes down some as further and further we get away from COVID. Um the intent of this program is not uh to um shape it around pandemic numbers and the impact of the pandemic. Uh but it's really like really reframing and refocusing our priorities associated with providing access to individuals who just frankly in the past have never had access to owning property in the city of Baltimore. So again, we're excited to sit down, talk to you and your team to kind of understand the methodology and numbers that you use uh to deduct and come up with um the numbers. And I think we have the 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 meeting rescheduled uh for Tom and 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 we'll do so. So um but two hundred dollars per square foot uh for twelve hundred, you know, twelve hundred square foot house, two hundred and forty thousand dollars in the middle of West Baltimore, East Baltimore is definitely impossible, but I also think that that's a really inflated number. We'd be interested in talking with folks that are currently doing scattered site development for the city of Baltimore and see if they're developing these properties at two hundred dollars per square foot. You know, so I I appreciate that and look forward to talking to you.
Yep, between a hundred and fifty to two hundred.
Yeah. Uh so at this point, uh Director Thompson, I think we jump right back into the amendments.
Yes, um thank you, Council President Ramos. So the last we are on amendment number. So amendment number five is really technical. It's that further clarifying language of what types of um what types of housing programs you originally base this off of, uh but then also further requiring that any applicable app, any eligible resident that is approved then receive um additional information from a HUD-approved counseling service. Um and then also in amendment number, I'm going to go to amendment number eight, if you don't mind skipping around because it is one of the largest amendments. It's establishing the recapture language that was a a major point in DHCD's previous bill report um in order to prevent people from just purchasing a dollar home for rent, profit, and to just flip it. So this would ensure that home buyers are using the properties to actually generate the generational wealth that we're trying to create and then strengthen the communities by incentivizing the community investment. I do want to point out, though, that in the amendment we um it says five years and I know that we actually discussed ten years. And so that's just a the chart that the council members have says ten years, the amendments say five years. That's just an an oversight on our part. It should be ten years. Any questions or anything about that provision before I move on to seventy-three? Okay, um so on to one seventy-three, which is the grant program. The same, the first amendment is pretty much the same as the amendment for one seventy-two, changing the legacy resident requirements to some of these more sharpened, narrowly
resident requirements to some of these more sharpened, narrowly tailored and more easily definable, more streamlined requirements. And then also, um, including that more clarifying language on those that are re-entering into our communities after in, incarceration. I know that there has been a lot of discussion around the amount of this grant since the grant is up to twenty-five thousand dollars. But that's pretty much on par with the existing programs that we have in terms of how much is provided, except for a dis- uh, existing programs are loans. Whereas I just want to really point out that this is a grant program. So it doesn't have to be, um, paid back. And then finally amendment number two on one seventy-three is that, uh, recapture language again that we had in one seventy-two.
Are there any questions, concerns? Hearing, seeing, I guess we can move to seventy-three.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. Last bill we have is, um, one seventy-four, which is the senior grants program with just one amendment and that amendment is from the Law Department to comply with their report around the data privacy concerns. Those are all of the amendments.
So again, these amendments were generated from the agency reports and working with agencies as well as, um, some external folks that reached out with concerns or advice or coaching, as well as, um, one of our studious council members, uh, had the ability of putting together some amendments as well. So, um, still plenty of opportunity for us to discuss additional amendments.
Mr. President, Director Thompson, can we get an interlineated, uh, copy of these? So it's easier to sort of track where the amendments are and stuff?
Absolutely. When I have it interlineated, you all will have an interlineated copy as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this point, are there any additional questions or concerns? Well, um, we do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday and to continue to try to drill down these amendments and including and adding in any additional amendments. So if folks have ideas, questions or concerns, you know, now is the time to really, um, speak your, uh, piece out of them. I think as you can see, you know, from a lot of the concerns that DHCD originally provided us as well as the Law Department, we really tried to factor them into, uh, the way we went back and looked at the bill. Thankful for their, um, support and assistance in, in kind of going down this path. Um, but again, to council members, we want you to do the same. We see this as having consequential impact citywide and that's why we posted this as a, uh, council of a whole, um, community structure. Uh, and we want you guys to participate. So if there aren't any additional questions or concerns, I'm about to adjourn, but I see people thinking out there. I don't want to adjourn without that hot question that you might have on tip of your mind. Hearing none, um, I promise I'll send out, um, uh, the, the, the information that we've received from, on the, um, the repair renovation costs. I'll send that report out to you guys. I'll also send examples of what a two oh three K kind of looks like. Uh, and then, uh, Commissioner Kennedy will be in touch with you, um, at a follow-up meeting. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. Baltimore, we love you.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.